I do have to say a special good evening to the men here. It is International Women's Day, a Men's Day, sorry. And no matter what we say, you know, like when we vex with us, we say a lot of things, right? Yeah, but we can't do without you all. We love you all so much and we need you all, our men as well. And just to let you know, we will always be there to support you, our men, just as you are to support us as the women. So happy International Men's Day to those of you who are here and those who are on the live, who are watching us in the diaspora, on TV, wherever you are. I hope today has been a wonderful day for you. Yes? So Spider, you're trying to raid on my parade. Because as I was driving up, I'm driving up with my ladies, and when we get to Denry, one of my girlfriends tell me, Nancy, Miss Etika, you are. And then I had to slow down to look at the houses. So I would like somebody to please send a message to the Honorable Minister of Housing. Christmas is coming. The houses need a little fresh coat of paint. You can buy a petit vert and a petit blanc. And please, please pay somebody with a widow from the area to cut the grass. But she doesn't want to be a widow. You have to go to the village. You have to go to the village. You have to go to the village. So I'm going to pray. I want to let you message by Honorable Richard Frederick. Because when I said that to her, it has finished the government. It was never a piece of cotton that he executed. So he might as well cut it. Cut the zebra and buy a petit vert. Anyway, that was the message for him. But Michael Flood, you know, on Thursday, God willing, he might respond to me, but who knows? You can hear me on Thursday. I mean, I'm just letting you know, right? Okay, so you have to give them a topic. So I have. Anyways, my people, it's serious time. It's serious time. We are here tonight and when I was sitting down and I was putting together some notes, I said to myself, do I really have to give Saint Lucius a reason again to come on match on the 30th of November? Do you really need another reason? Who said this? We say a lot ways. We also have been matched on the 30th of November? I don't think so. I don't think so. Because for the last couple of weeks and months, two and a half, well, three years, they start their third term, they're into their third term already. For me, it's not a problem. Facebook, everyone lives here. You all realize that? Everyone sees WhatsApp voice messages. You all realize that? This is what we have to do. And the confessions is what is interesting. Because a lot of them who are doing the lies are now saying to you, what? I didn't hear you. I voted for the Labour Party, but... That's the message you're hearing. Monsieur, I voted for this. But I'm waiting. That's the message you're hearing. But I said this. And I'm not young. There is a lot of people here who are old. So I have a child. And people who are old, they say, Nancy, I've lived here all my life. Even after the hurricane happened. But I turned away. Things are hard in this country in 2023. And I'm not the one saying it, you know. My habit is that I don't eat chicken. So let's not worry because my habit is. But the people who don't even have the two grains of green bananas in this country. Monsieur, I'm not a bad person. I'm not a bad person. But I'm not a bad person. $5. I'm not a bad person. Maybe I'm not a bad person. But what about them? They are too old. They are too old. Who is this? And do you know what he says? I mean, I saw a sign from Marcy. So I, let's go to the supermarket. They said, notice. And they said that you can only get two packets of rice per person. In 2023, Emma Hippolyte and the Labour Party have Saint Lucia in such a state that Saint Lucius have to go to the supermarket and we have to ration. We have to ration to buy two packets of rice? Don't you believe Marcy, Mr. Marcy? But he said, we said this. And he said, we always buy this. We've been matched on the 30th of November. I don't have to. I don't have to. Just for that alone, you have to take to the streets and speak to the mismanagement. Women, I'm a woman named Emma. She is an accountant. He said, it's all sold out. He doesn't manage the ministry. Bradley Management Ministry. During COVID, we didn't have a shortage of rice. And God, do we have a shortage? Excuse, excuse this. I mean, come on. If it's not enough to do this, shut up. Who is this? I don't know. Are you thinking, people? I just want you to not think only of yourself. Even if I say coolly, you say coolly. Coolly, I'm a lady. Coolly, I'm a girl. I'm a boy. I'm a girl. So it's probably the last thing I will go and buy on the supermarket shelf. But I'm not thinking about me. And you should not even be thinking about you. Think about your neighbor. Think about your sister. Think about your cousin. Think about your friend on the road. Think about the people in your community. And think how difficult it must be for these people to survive. So I ask you a question. What more does the Labour Party have to do to you for you to take a stand? What more? Because this is what you have to do. You have to do it. Because you don't have to buy now. This is what you have to do. And I'm telling you. So if you want to take a line to go and buy rice in this country. You have to put a link. You change that? Marcy, you have to recycle. This supermarket, you have to recycle. To make a package, you have to recycle. So this is what you have to do. You have to buy a bunch of bananas. All of them are in supermarkets. So you have to go to the market. You have to buy it. Marry me, go to the market. So you have to do six packages. That's all you have to do. In 2023, under a Saint Lucia Labour Party. And you say, you have to put you. This is what you say. I want to ask a question. Maybe not of you who are here. Because I have to assume that most, if not all of you here in the last election, you understood the vision of the United Workers' Party and you voted for it. But the people who are listening to me tonight, because when I left my seat, we were at about 500 and something persons on the live. So we have a few persons who are watching us. I want to ask that question. Why did you decide to give the Labour Party your support in the last election? When Philip J. P. stood on the platform and he said that if it was a Labour Party government in power, that he would not give them $500 a month as income support, but he would have given them $1,500. You fell for that. You believed him. And remember, I say I'm not really talking to you. Because I know you're a good-minded people. You're a sensible people. So I don't care. So Alan Chasney tried, tried, but he was scared. And that is why he doesn't try it, you know. You know why? Because he knows he cannot come on that platform and mama guy any UWP. He has to come and he has to come good. And that is why we have substance on the platform of the United Workers' Party. We don't have 20 years plan. We don't have 20 years plan. We don't have a sky. We come with substance and practical solutions to what is going on in this country. That's what we come with. He said, even if Philip J. Pierre said, he didn't say that. You change that? He said, I wish you should find the tip. If anybody can show me the tip. Let your money tip. He said, well, I did not say I would give it. I said, if it was a Labour Party, that's what we would have done. This is what you have to pay. Your naughty program, you want to buy 1.5. I want you to be a good man. He said, Nancy, Joakim from a meeting, ex-officers in ministry. And he can help us there, everyone. Why do you have people applying for the 1.5? How come is that number of people? Nobody can apply for that? The terms and conditions to access the 1,005. I mean, you telling people that you can apply if you are 12 years and below and you had a parent who died. And because of your match, we had an increase and a rise in COVID. And when you all won the election, we didn't even have 100 people that died yet. By now, you'll have over 400 people that die from COVID. Except by 12 years and below, your parents who died, 1,500. So everyone, you have to say that. Dear Pierre and Joakim, no change. This is what you have to do. Two marks for the balance, too late shall be your cry. We don't want it again. When Pierre said that if you voted for him, he would put you first and some of you believe him. But who is first today? His daughter have a big job. His Leo Clark wife has a big job. Claudia Francis has a big job. Ernest Hillel brother has a big job. Miguel has a big job. What do you have? The people who voted for Labour Party, what do you have? What job does your daughter have? The ladies who are all over the place canvassing campaigning. You have to be a woman. And you have to be smart. Because you say flabot. What do you have now? So you have to step, you see men, and you all learn it. And that is enough? $350, $400? You see men. So you see men. And that's enough for you? You satisfied with that? You go to the office and beg for a little handout? For you to buy a tank of gas and pumps for your children? That's what you voted for? How is your life better from July 2021 to now? They love to boast that we give them 15,2, 15,2. The people of Saint Lucia gave them that money. What have they given the people of Saint Lucia in return for that? What have they given them? Okay. 2.5 in the tutu, this is what your daddy. 2.5, this is what you buy. Because your daddy knew jazz in the tutu. Jazz, merely 2.5 in the tutu. Whatever the tutu means, Mahav. That's what you deserve. Increase in the price of bread. That's what you deserve. And I want you to understand why the price of bread has gone off, you know. I hope you realize that bread didn't go up because the price of flour went up. Do you know that? It's not the price of flour that went up, you know. Emma Hippolyte and Philip J. Pierre decided that the amount of money that they were using to subsidize flour, to keep it at a certain price, they couldn't subsidize it anymore. And so they had to cut down on the subsidy and allow for bakers and people who consume flour to pay a higher price for it. So it's not on the market that the price went up. They couldn't subsidize it anymore. Why? They needed the money to pay for the salary of people like Silas Wilson, who sits at St. Jude's all day. They created a position. They created a position for him as liaison officer in the Ministry of Economic Development. And they pay him $250,000 on his contract. That's what they did not subsidize flour for, okay? They put you first, all right? They needed the money to hire the likes of people like Riani Isidoro. In the Prime Minister's office. Chemical is not strong enough. You need some strong disinfectant. But that's what government is today. Governance, that's what it is today. And they tell you they couldn't subsidize flour, but they're creating positions, black is white, for their friends, their family. But your pastor subsidized flour in France. You pay 45 cents more. And who? Today, Saint Lucius, you all are sitting there and you all will say nothing? When they pay Shazi to send him back to Martinique, but all he does, all day long, every single talk show in Saint Lucia, Shazi calls from 8, 9 o'clock in the morning till 12 o'clock. Every single one of them. All of them. Somebody in the diaspora who's supposed to be working for us there. So that's the job. Your teacher, you have to pay. You have to pay. When the Labour Party criticized the agriculture program that we had and the many initiatives that provided support to the farmers, you believe them. We had a storm and the Moroccan government gave fertilizer. We're a big 10 farmers. So let's. Extension officer. Oh, we have fertilizer, Miss Nancy. I put you down for fertilizer. We said, hi. We bought 2, 4, 6 sacks. We buy bananas. We went down by Bosa Ju. Take a line. A line. Some people were there for two, three hours in the hot sun. Can you imagine the disrespect to farmers? To take a line. You have to buy your sack cell. But cholesterol is low. The minister, the official, and the farmer, you have to buy a sack. You have to sell it. But bona fide farmers, free fertilizer given for the farmers. You have to be politic. You have to be a farmer. Now, you have to be a lady. You have to be a lady. Saint Lucius, it's time for you to stand up and to speak your mind. Whatever it is you are afraid of, they've already done it. They've done it already. So you have to be a lady. So you have to be a lady. Talk. Stand up and rise up. And that is why I want you to come on the 30th of November. You need to rise up. You have to be a lady. It's been all day. You change that? You have to be a lady. We never did anything to it. The abattoir is there. The equipment is there. Everything is there. Every single day. You've heard the government of Saint Lucia say anything about that abattoir in view of? When people said he was going to make education a priority, some of you fell for it. He said he will do one laptop for child, one university per household, etc. I have to tell you all that. You have to buy a magic. You have one university per child, per household, right? But such a person. Such a person. They issue, you buy, they issue scholarship for university. Same Kyla, same mama, same papa. And the people that are in need, the needy people, who wants to send their children. Who knows? A child, who can sort a poorer household. Who knows? It's a pretty bright. But it's a well-to-do. Yeah, man. These children are smarter, there's more potential. But they do not get the opportunity. And so if you do not have a red card, you're not going to join scholarship. So you have to come and match for that. Because it is only the United Workers' Party who will give scholarship based on merit and not whether you have a red or a yellow card. So you have to come and say no to that. We spoke about the school feeding program at length when we were in opposition 2015. When we got into government in 2016, first thing Minister of Finance Alan Chasney did was to increase the monies for the school feeding program across the schools in Saint Lucia. You remember that? So I want Sean Edward to tell me why. For the last couple of months, that there's been no feeding program at the primary schools over the last couple of months. Who knows? You have to be a lady. So you have to be a lady. Miss Nancy, we have to be a lady. You have to be a lady. You have to be a lady. But you have to be a lady. You have to be a little bone stick. You have to be a little bone stick. High-end lady. You have to be a woman. But you have to be a lady. By mama, I'm in school. You have to be a lady. And Sean, you have to be a lady. Now, you have to be a lady. You have to be a lady. So for over a month, there's no food at the school feeding program. And the people who are cooking food, you have to make tuna fish and din. You have to make corned beef. Can you imagine in 2023, a laptop is more important than giving the children food for them to go to school? That is the government of the Saint Lucia Labour Party. So right now, mama, I'm a lady. So you all didn't get the complaint? Mama, I'm not going home. This is my food. You have to buy your tuna fish. Oh. And you have to be a piece. But that's what we have. Mismanagement. Mama, I'm a lady. Sean, I'm a lady. And I'm not going to pay. My people, this country is going down. Those of you who criticize, some of you criticize about ITL and OJO. But even if you have to buy, but you have to buy. And you have to have everyone. Are you aware that ITL and OJO that is saving the South today with the jobs that Alan Chasney and Bradley Felix brought together in the south of this country? That's what's saving them today. And they come with a youth economy. I have no objections to giving young people money to start their business, you know. Good thing, clap for them. Yeah, clap for them, that's okay. Clap for them, they're giving them money. But when you start a small business, what is most critical? Not sustainability? So if you have a business making C Moss. What do you sustain? You have to get C Moss. So you have to wear T-shirt. You have to get a T-shirt. Whatever service that you are providing as a young person, you need customers. So when you have a government that has killed the economy, that has reduced the spending power of every single Saint Lucia, so that extra $2.50. You're giving these young people money to start a business, but there's nothing happening in the economy to sustain their business. How do you expect them to succeed? How? So giving them money is not sufficient, Philip J. Pierre. You need to create the economic environment to ensure that these young people, when they get their money and they start their business, that persons can have money in their back pocket, their front pocket, their side pocket. They can have ching-ching in their pocket so they can subsidize and sustain those businesses. And the only person who knows how to bring ching-ching in this country is Alan Michael Chasney. My people, this country is in a mess. We deserve better. You deserve a hospital that carries the basic medications and doctor's service and not a free ambulance ride to go and die. You deserve a state-of-the-art modern facility at St. Jude's and not an 80-year-old mold-infested building. You deserve a national health insurance that allows for every Saint Lucia to access healthcare at any facility, be it public or private, and not a universal healthcare program that only caters for a pregnant woman. You deserve access to affordable, quality healthcare and not have to wait to be 80 years plus to get a free health check in Saint Lucia. You deserve sustainable jobs to feed your family and pay your bills and not one week step once a year. What happens to the rest of the year? My people of Saint Lucia, this country is in a mess. You know it. I know it. And the Labour Party knows it as well. If we say nothing, it will continue to get worse. We cannot afford to allow the country that we love to be destroyed by the Saint Lucia Labour Party. These people don't care about you. They eat on time. They pay their bills on time. They get their salaries on time. You have to stand up for yourself. We here are in the struggle with you. We know and we understand. So on November 30th, you will lead, not us. You will lead on the 30th of November. Are you ready to lead? Are you ready to lead? And the men and women sitting up here will follow your lead. You come out and say enough is enough. Don't think about what your friends will say, not your family or your coworkers. Come out and let your voice be heard. You don't have to be a UWP supporter. You don't have to be a friend of UWP. You just have to be a concerned citizen of this country. If you feel the squeeze, If you feel the squeeze, come out. Truck drivers, equipment operators, come out. Vendors, small business owners, come out. Bus drivers, taxi drivers, come out. Unemployed people, come out. Tout Moon, come out. And let's show this wicked Labour administration enough is enough. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you very much, Nancy. A round of applause once again.